Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Good evening, Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branca, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Anthony Tenerola.
Jeff Spoh.
General Assistant Minister.
Natalie Barrows, Student Rep. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the December 13th, 2020 School Committee Meeting Minutes, December 15th, 2020 School Committee Meeting Minutes, December 15th, 2020 Executive Session Minutes, January 3rd, 2021 School Committee Meeting Minutes. The executive session minutes are not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They carry seven zero zero. Correspondence? Dr. Branca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your drive, you have a copy of a memorandum that came out from Commissioner Riley last week regarding assessment and accountability. So I won't read the whole thing to you, but the short version of this is the department still believes that MCAS is a crucial diagnostic tool that will help promote student success and educational equity. If you recall, last year, we got a reprieve from the MCAS cycle due to the pandemic hitting in an unforeseen manner. So at this time, we have had time to plan. So some of the strategies they're thinking about will be reduced test amount, reduced test time. Also, they're going to modify the competency determination at the high school level. So for our seniors or students who need to pass the MCAS to graduate, that's going to be a modified assessment. We're going to be allowed to give them a passing grade if they earn it at a course level, which will take place in that. They're also going to give accountability relief. They haven't determined what that accountability relief looks like yet. I would assume it's definitely going to be around attendance. And it is also going to be around not naming any new low incident districts. So right now, that's all to be determined. He's going to run it by the Board of Education for approval. And then once we have dates and more of a rollout, I'll give you a second update. But just in case people are asking you all, right now, it looks like MCAS will happen in some kind of modified way in a shortened time period. Thank you.
Visitors, comments, and questions?
I'm sorry, could I just make a comment based on this last part, if you don't mind?
Sure.
This was in response to the MCA/MASC request or motion late last year to the Department of Education, which this board here decided to support. And so I thank you for that. At least they brought it under consideration and decided to make some accommodations for some grades. So I think that was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Share the success. Natalie?
TES, they are busy planning and preparing to participate in the Great Kindness Challenge during the week of January 25th. This challenge is a positive and proactive bullying prevention initiative. And they are happy to share that this is their seventh year participating. And each year, TES receives a kindness certification. And in 2020, TES joined over 15 million students in over 28,000 schools in over 110 countries. The students across the globe completed over 750 million acts of kindness. Mrs. Kavanaugh says that the power of kindness and showing our stripes at TES is more important than ever and that they look forward to updating the committee and the families on their efforts centered around kindness. And at TNS, they are glad to be back in school. The students have been working hard and have gotten back to the routine of school. They have moved some students around in cohorts to balance out classes since they were gone for two weeks. And they have allowed their students more freedom during lunches to sit with friends socially distanced. Mr. Paulatt would also like to introduce their 2020-2021 Project 351 Student Ambassador, Caitlin Fugazato. She will work with their former ambassadors to help bring some great community service programs to the school to support families in need. And her parents are very proud of her, and so is the school community. And at THS, they are holding a virtual college fair on February 4th from 6:00 to 8:00, and that is open to all THS students. And trimester two report cards are coming out next Friday, January 22nd. And congratulations to the students of the month for January, and those are Abby Cornellier, Jared DeBruin, Brian Gardner, and Mariana Jennings. Congratulations to the class of 2021 who have been accepted to college. Some of those schools include UMass Amherst, UMass Lowell, Providence College, Penn State, Washington State, Indiana University, Grinnell University, UVM, and many more. We'd also like to congratulate one of our classmates, Kevin Carpenter. Kevin was awarded a scholarship to Grinnell College as a part of the BridgeQuest Scholarship Program. And he is also playing golf at Grinnell. And many of our other classmates have signed their letters of intent to play Division III sports at their selected colleges. So congratulations to Megan Hogan, who will be playing field hockey at Riviera, Molly Lanier, who will be playing lacrosse at Framingham State, and Abby Savard and Megan Athier, who will be playing soccer at Framingham State College. And the class of 2021 met with their advisors, Mr. Bodett and Ms. Martin, today and began discussions for the end of the year senior activities. While it is obviously difficult to make definitive plans due to the COVID-19 restrictions, the students, class officers, advisors, and the administration are working collaboratively to begin exploring some great options for ways for our class to celebrate the culmination of our time at THS. And we will keep you posted as the plans are solidified. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take the Student Services Presentation 9A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They carry seven zero zero.
So, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, each year, we have Mr. Lewenzik, our Director of Student Services, coming in to do a presentation mid-year. Generally, the focus of the lean of that presentation is special ed, which is why Mr. Riley, our special ed facilitator from TES, and Mr. Evans, our special ed facilitator from TMS, are here. But I believe Mr. Lewenzik may touch on a couple other issues, if not this week, certainly at the next meeting. The role of the Director of Student Services encompasses special education, nursing, counseling, out-of-district placements, Title IX, civil rights. So pretty much everything goes to that office. So we appreciate you focusing primarily on special education tonight, and we'll go from there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Flan, again. Good evening, and thank you for the time to provide updates within the Student Services Department. Tonight, I'll be sharing a more holistic approach to our work within the counseling, nursing, and special education department. As the committee has been updating our evolving instructional model throughout the school year, I felt it was equally important to share broadly about supporting the social-emotional needs of our learning community. Throughout the school year, as you can imagine, this has looked very different. Our staff are looking for more support. Our identified students who were and are in need of support may be manifesting differently. And then we have all of our students. When it comes to meeting the individual needs of all students, our counselors are really in a unique balancing act this year. As always, the case, as always is the case, they are responsible for supporting the needs of identified students while also focusing on the broad-based social-emotional needs of all students within the school. However, this has not been a typical year, as we know, and as such, we are experiencing an increase in need for support from a population of students who have not required this level of support in past years. And I think that's important to emphasize. We really are seeing that across all three schools at this particular point. As you know, we have students in the remote and hybrid learning models. And while many students and families have not been negatively impacted by our various instructional models, we know that others are struggling in a variety of ways. Our current school counseling model consists of two counselors at the middle school and two counselors at the high school. In this year, for the first time in many years, we have two counselors at the elementary school as a result of a late resignation. While we made the decision to not fill the position going into this year, we recognize it's been difficult to meet the needs of a diverse population within the elementary level. And we will soon be discussing our staff and needs and options across the district. We're fortunate with the support of this committee to have added a full-time school psychologist to the Norris Road campus. This position has helped us to fill the gap and better address the high-end mental health needs that we discussed here last year. At your next SE meeting on January 26th, I believe, our counseling coordinators will provide you a more authentic look at how the counseling team and administrative teams are supporting the social-emotional needs of our students and staff at the building level. As we shift our focus to nursing, I would like to thank the committee for your continued advocacy and support of our additional 1.0 nurse. Our head nurse, Michelle Riley, and I have recently interviewed candidates and will be solidifying this hire in the upcoming week. This person will play a pivotal role for the remainder of the year on the Norris Road campus and will be working closely to ensure a smooth transition to the role as well as acclimating to all buildings, establishing rapport with students, staff, and families, becoming comfortable with our SNAP program, which is the electronic health program, communicating with families regarding contact tracing, quarantining, isolation, and all state guidelines, as well as assisting with annual screenings and providing nursing coverage as needed and when needed. In addition to supporting the unique needs of medically challenged and typical students this year, our nurses are heavily involved in helping to support the social-emotional needs of our students, our students' families, our students, and staff in a variety of ways that involve relationship building, trust, educating, proactive communication, and follow-up. We are confident in our nursing department and the efforts of our nursing team as a whole in creating a cohesive model that provides support for all community members while keeping health and safety at the forefront of everything that we do. I just want to take a moment to publicly recognize our entire nursing team for the fantastic job that they have done throughout this very non-typical year. I think we have maybe done that in different ways publicly at school committee, but since I had the opportunity to speak this evening, I certainly wanted to give that credit as well. Earlier, I mentioned identified students. Many of these students, as you know, have IEPs. And I have Mr. Riley and Mr. Evans present to really go through the next few slides to show some of the uniquenesses within the different schools specific to the level of need as well as related services. To provide a bit of context with the first slide, and before I have Mr. Riley join, each IEP is individually written based on the services and level of supports determined by the team. As we refer to these next few slides, we'll be defining level of need in three ways: low level of need, moderate, as well as high. When we talk about the low level of need, we'll be talking about full inclusion special education services. Students that are outside the general education classroom, less than 21% of the day. These students may receive a related service, pre-related service outside, and then for the majority of their day being in the general education classroom, just to get a little bit of a basis. The moderate level of need is our partial inclusion special education services, where students are outside the general education classroom 21 to 60% of the time. And our high level of need, which is our substantially separate classroom with special education services, where students are outside the general education classroom more than 60% of the time. The bottom tier, you'll hear us refer to related services. And that'll be broken down, similar to the service delivery breakdown within the IEP, where we'll be talking mostly about the Grid B as well as Grid C this evening. We won't talk a lot about Grid A, but just to make you aware, that is also consulting services. Those are non-direct services to students. And what's a bit more impactful that we'll discuss today are Grid B services, where services are being provided within the classroom setting, as well as services in the C grid, which are individual pull-out as well as small group pull-out sessions. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Riley to give us a bit of a breakdown of the elementary level of need and related services that you see there on your screen.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewenzik. Before I begin, I really want to take the time to really emphasize what an amazing job our special education teachers, related service providers, and parent professionals continue to do in meeting the needs of all of our identified students, regardless of the learning model, the child's family's chosen. As you can see, we currently have 172 identified students receiving special education services at TES. Of those, 44 of them are preschool-age students whose IEPs look a little different than our K-5. So for the percentages, I use the remaining students to identify the level of need. If you see, in general, of the 172 students represent 22% of our total building population. So that's a pretty significant number of students that are receiving special educational support. And as a trend that we've seen consistent over the last few years, continues to increase year over year. Additionally, the students' level of need, which Mrs. Lewenzik defined earlier, which really relates to the amount of special education support and related services they receive in order to make progress in school, continues to grow in the moderate and high level of need year over year. You can also see that the number of related services that we provide, both in the classroom and in smaller group sessions outside of the classroom, it's greater than you'll see at the rest of the district. But that's really goal-driven because the theory is the more related services and supports we provide in an earlier age, the students will begin to independently utilize these skills and become more and more independent at generalizing skills across the setting as they transition over to our Norris Road campus. As I said earlier, the special education teachers, service providers, and parent professionals have done an incredible job of meeting the students' needs this year, providing as much in-person support and services as possible and being creative when in-person services were not possible. In addition to TES, we prioritize 124 students for four days of in-person instruction. And this is not solely for special education needs, but also other needs, a variety of factors that lie with students, team-based members, to recommend for four days of in-person instruction. I know the school counselors are coming to kind of give you a little view of it. I feel as if I didn't mention what an incredible job they continue to do to meet the students' needs from a special education perspective, by the way, providing social-emotional support and continue to do so even with some of the COVID restrictions that are in place. Additionally, this year, our speech and language pathologists and school counselors have undertaken a significant amount of professional development around social-emotional learning and social skill development that we'll continue to use in the future to provide increased supports in that area. A few years ago, we were able to hire a PCBA back full-time on staff, removing from a contracted position. This has really been invaluable across the district. Our PCBA currently provides services and supports to roughly 30 students across the district. And having someone full-time is a lot for consistency and support to not only students, teachers, and staff, but also the parents, and to kind of generalize those skills that we're teaching at school also at home. As I said, the benefit of the PCBA has been seen not only at TES, where we are incredibly fortunate to have it, but also at Norris Road. I think it'd be important to note, too, that we also do continue to see an increase in the number of students that require substantially separate programming to make progress, especially at a younger age. And our PCBA plays an integral part as our related service providers and special ed teachers just provide supports to that age group of students. I think it's important to note, as we look at, you know, grade level trends, that we anticipate 24 of our preschool students transitioning to kindergarten next year. Many of whom may require substantially separate programming. And in a typical year, we have about nine to 13 transitioning into kindergarten. So our population of students requiring substantially separate support, special education support at a younger age is growing, and it's a trend that we're going to continue to see, I think, year over year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Riley. It's going to be an overview of Norris Road and some of the other professional development that we're undertaking.
Good evening, everyone. As Brian said, with the staff at the elementary school, I'd like to also, you know, give a big thank you to the staff at the middle school and the high school. I think, you know, general ed teachers, special education teachers, related service providers, parent professionals, school counselors. Everyone across the board has really done an exemplary job of providing support to our students here in Tinsborough. And I couldn't be prouder and I couldn't say enough to anyone I speak to. So I would just want to start by thanking our staff. So I'm just going to go through just our slides a little bit and just highlight a few things that I've observed and seen some of the trends at both our middle school and our high school. So right now, at the middle school, we have 72 identified students. And much like the elementary school, the bulk of those students really fall in that moderate disability category. It's something we often expect at the middle school and high school level in terms of the supports and services that students need, both in the special education setting as well as within the general ed setting. Looking at some trends, we have seen at the middle school level an increase in some students requiring speech and language services. But the one thing that I really wanted to highlight, and this is what we spoke about last year, was the, really, that need for that full-time school psychologist on the Norris Road campus. We've seen an increase in students that have mental health needs and need counseling support. I think that having a Kayla O'Shea, this O'Shea of school psychologists, has been phenomenal. She's extremely accessible to both students and staff alike. She has given us a nice perspective, and she's been able to provide supports to both students with disabilities on ed plans as well as students that do not have disabilities. So she has been a wonderful asset to have. But following those trends, right now, at the middle school, we do have 31 students receiving counseling. That is an increase of six compared to last year at the middle school, so we are still seeing that upward trajectory. In regards to other things of note, from the middle school, in regards to direct reading instruction, starting to see that as an increased need for specific reading instruction. That's something we're going to continue to monitor over the school year and track that increase of need. But we've also earmarked professional development for staff in order to provide increased targeted interventions, just to make sure that staff is getting the training that they need. Mr. Allen and I will continue to collaborate and discuss the needs as students transition up from the elementary school as well to keep an eye on that. Mr. Allen, you mentioned the full-time PCBA. Typically, we haven't, we've had some need for the PCBA at the middle school in the past. It's, we've noticed in a small increase, but a notable increase in the need to address, you know, some of our behavioral health needs, behavioral needs within the classroom. So it's been great having a full-time PCBA to be able to, whether it's myself, whether it's some of our special ed teachers, whether it's our parent professionals, to be able to collaborate and consult in regards to specific student needs. Moving on, we can go on to Tinsborough High School. Tinsborough High School, right now, we have 57 students. That's 13% of the student population requiring special education services. Again, the bulk within that moderate range. Again, we're seeing that same upward trajectory. We have 28 students right now receiving counseling services. That's an increase of seven direct services from there. That doesn't include any students that might access the school psychologist or school counselor that aren't identified on ed plan. So we are still seeing that increase from that mental health perspective there. Again, you know, I shout out, Ms. O'Shea has jumped really in at the high school level with both students and staff alike. One thing that we'd like to continue to explore the development of is students, whether they're on an ed plan or not, that have mental health needs. They may have been hospitalized, they may have been in a partial placement, but they're transitioning back to Tinsborough High School. Since we're, last year, we saw kind of an increase in numbers there to really start to develop programming to get students back in the building, but have a place, have a person to be able to work with as they're transitioning back so they don't feel like they're transitioning back without support. Another thing of note at the high school level is that typically, typically from the special education, it's not just the special education perspective, but from my lens tonight, we would anticipate some students going to our surrounding vocational or technical schools and have that split. And so typically, we would expect maybe around 15, give or take, students on ed plans transitioning for the freshman year in the high school. This year, we saw a notable increase in students coming in this direction. Like a lot because of our acceptances and the variability because of the COVID restrictions. And we didn't see that. So we do have a higher number, about a third more students in our freshman class than, a third more students receiving special education services in our freshman class than we typically are used to. And I'm just kind of tracking and curious about as students transition next year, if that, given the restrictions that we have right now, if that's still going to be a trend. So just another thing just to kind of keep on our radar as we move through the year. Just going down, kind of breakdown, at the middle school, we have 34 special education students. I don't have the number for all students. I can get those for you if you'd like. But for four-day students, students receiving special education services, we have 34 students, students accessing a hybrid model, 20-day students, and students of remote, 10 students. At the high school, we have 14 students accessing four-day programming, 30 students in our hybrid model, and 13 students of remote.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Thank you, Mr. Evans. In addition to understanding how we best meet our students' needs, tonight's information also helps us to best understand the budgetary impact in regard to staffing and programming. As you recall, at the elementary, out of 128 identified students, K-5, only 10, or 8%, are at a low level of need. I'm pointing this out because on the flip side, there's 118, or 92% of these students that have high or moderate levels of need, which involve, but are not limited to, classroom accommodations, programming changes, parent professional supports, and related services as described, all of which do have cost attached. And I think it's important to, you know, speak to that tonight as well as see the similarities and patterns that evolved within the middle school and high school. The big takeaways, when you're really looking at that related service as well as that level of need, across the district, the majority of our students present with a moderate or high level of need, that our related services represent a significant portion of the day, and that these services and level of need come at a significant cost. Moving forward, while tonight was about supporting our learning community as a whole as well as better understanding the financial impact of doing this work well, there are a couple of upcoming federal and state requirements I wanted to bring to the committee's attention. The timing has not necessarily been ideal. We are currently in the process of going through, and almost at completion, luckily, our special education and civil rights review. As of next week, we will have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education come and perform our tiered focus monitoring. For some of you who are new to the committee, this is the new shift, where we used to talk about coordinated program review every six years, where the department comes in and goes through all of our specialized civil rights programming. Basically, gives us a report card. How are we doing? What's our level of compliance? And then areas that we may need to improve upon, we go into corrective action. So there's a significant amount of time that is necessary as part of the tiered focus monitoring. This will happen now every three years, where the department will come out and work closely with us. And then we will, again, and any areas in which they've identified, go into corrective action. We're feeling good about special education services across the board, and we've gotten some really positive feedback. And I certainly could not have done this work without Josh or Brian's help. Documents reviews have been ongoing since last spring as uploads to the department, as well as electronic family surveys, interviews, and remote facility observations, where we couldn't do in-person observations with the Department of Elementary and Secondary yet. As a second bullet there, you'll see educational stability. This is another review that we're right now going through as well, and it's happening simultaneously with the tiered focus monitoring review. The department didn't necessarily give us much of a break, as these two reviews kind of came in at the exact same time. As many of you sit on the policy subcommittee, I know you've done some nice work helping us to update our policies specific to homelessness and foster care as well as the military. And all of those were seen as part of this work and uploaded as part of our compliance. So again, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed will come in and review where we stand with those documents as well as our updates on a professional development end that happen on an annual basis with our counselors as well as our admin assistants in order to really understand, as a family enrolls specifically, what are the types of supports and services that are going to be necessary and needed in order for them to be able to do as well as they can within the community, but also foster the relationships within the schools. So that's just a little bit more on that. As we head into FY '22 budget planning, the Student Services Department will be using the information shared tonight as a basis for planning, along with continued support. the information shared tonight as a basis for planning, along with continued support in the areas of transportation, tuitions, programming, and staffing, while ensuring the social emotional health and well-being of all our learning community. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and appreciate your time.
Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Bryant. A lot of good information. One thing that caught my eye is the physical therapy numbers at the elementary school. There's twenty-five students, and then between the middle school and high school, there's only one student combined. Is that typical to have?
It is typical, yeah.
What's the reason behind that?
It is typical, and it's been a pretty well-established pattern, also specific to our district. We have had, over the course of the past couple of years, a couple of identified students here and there that make that shift on a physical therapy end to Norris Road campus, but by and large, that is at the elementary school specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Any committee members have questions?
Question.
Mr. Mall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the items that Mr. Evans brought up was the increase in reading services. Can that be attributed to anything in particular, or is...
I, I think it's, we have a lot of, we've had students that have transitioned into the district that are requiring reading services. We've done some evaluations and looked at students, so I think there's a wide array of different impacts on the district because of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think because we're seeing, you know, a number really sort of becoming more representative of the cohort, we really want to take that next step and establish the impact of professional development with the staff that we know can absolutely put this, we know tool belt in order to lend the supports necessary needed at the elementary, but certainly as the students make a transition to the Norris Road campus.
And I think that, I think some of the services that we're talking about, you know, the revitalization, I think, I think are helpful in kind of planning for our students that will be transitioning up from the elementary school, really planning to ensure that we have that.
And interventions, yeah.
Do you have enough staff to be able to handle that?
To the microphone, please.
Josh, can you step up so people can hear us?
Yep, oh, sorry. Yeah, right, right now, we have enough staff to handle the increase, and it's something that we're continuing to monitor and look at that, you know, look at that as that continues to really allow an increase.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just make one point. I think, I think it's important that we do the presentation every year at this time. I think, you know, we started this five years ago, this kind of mid-year check-in with Student Services and, and, you know, positions that, that we talked about in January evolved throughout the budget process, whether it was the BCBA, whether it was our part-time nurse a few years ago, whether it was the new school psychologist. And to hear, to hear them speak about the, the fruits of those budgeting decisions by this committee is helpful right now. So things I'm hearing, that I'll probably hear more about in the next couple of weeks, certainly reading at the elementary school, I've been reading at the middle school, and potentially some more counseling at the elementary school. So I think we'll start to hear some of that as we start talking about our budget development going forward. But, but it's important that we get a pulse on things now, so we know how to strategically put a budget together that's going to address our needs to the best of our ability moving forward, which is why this is critical to have this meeting every year. I mean, so thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
No more questions? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will resume our regular agenda already in progress. Subcommittee update. Superintendent Valuation Subcommittee met with Dr. Flanagan this evening. He presented a mid-year update. I believe, is that in the drive? Get mic?
All right, we'll do it right now.
Okay, so, all the members who want to read it will be in the drive. Personnel. Notification of intent to retire. September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Kelly Woodard, DES teacher, twenty-eight plus years of service. And December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, Linda Vincent, DES teacher, thirty-four plus years of service. Good luck to you guys. Appreciate it. My daughter had Ms. Vincent, so I know what a wonderful teacher she was firsthand.
Mr. Chair, two outstanding educators that have put a lot of time into this district, two, two outstanding people, Linda and Kelly. So thank you both for your service, and they're going to be with us for a few months as we go into next year, but congratulations to both. I know it's a tough decision that they wrestle with.
Yeah. Wish them happiness and health in their retirement.
unfinished business.
Subcommittee update, Dr. Flanagan.
I'm still just run through our slide deck, and won't spend a whole lot of time on it tonight. Some people are sick of hearing me talk about what our learning model drivers are, but we'll bring it up again, just so people can see at home. It becomes ingrained, and you can see these slides in your sleep. Health and safety of our students is our number one and top priority, and we are focused on that everything we do. Next slide, please. Context and data. You're sick of hearing me say that, but it's true. You know, I think we had, we had a great joint meeting with the Board of Health last night, and I think that was one of the messages we got loud and clear as well, is, is you need to really look at context and data. And we sincerely thank the entire Board of Health for, for supporting us and having that meeting with us last night. Next slide, please, Mike. Again, just a reminder, DPH and DESI, if you're in red, prioritize in-person learning as best you can. We're in a hybrid model. Next slide. We'll jump off to our website at this point. Just to go to the dashboard again, hearing, hearing good feedback from, from the community members about the dashboard, they appreciate the thirty-thousand-foot view on page one. So currently, right now, we have four active cases in the district, three at the elementary school, and one at the high school. And if we go down to the details, again, you can see there's a little bit more information if you're looking for it. We have seventy-five total cases in the district since September fourteenth. Again, we do not count remote learners. And then for those people who want to look at the trend in the community, we should go up to the third tab and see where we are as a community. Happy to see that those numbers are coming down a little bit from where we were, geez, just in mid-December. So we'll go back to our PowerPoint now. Unless there was any questions on that information? So I just want to talk about three other topics, three other topics briefly. So we participated in a webinar today, myself, Dr. Branko, Ms. Lewenzic, and Michelle Riley from the middle school. It was about pool testing. And I know many of you probably heard about the announcement last week from Governor Baker that pool testing was available in schools. So we attended a one-hour and fifteen-minute webinar today. There were over a thousand people on this webinar. And I will say that it, it certainly, it's very interesting. It, it provided a lot of information, but it raised even more questions. So it's certainly something that we're, we're going to need to really dig into and understand it a little bit more. We have a lot of questions about rollout, what it could look like. I think one of the things that we had hoped would be pool testing could happen kind of randomly throughout the school with different populations, but to really get into this, it's pool testing of every student and every staff member in every school once a week. So I'm just concerned about the manpower that we have currently employed the district to, to deal with that. So we have a lot of questions, and we're going to continue to stay on top of this and follow this as it goes. There is a survey that had to be filled, has to be filled out by this Friday. We've already filled it out, which will keep us in the pipeline, but we just need to get some more information, really wrap our head around it. So we'll come back to the committee with that in the next couple of weeks. Remote learning versus traditional snow day. So I had a great meeting with, with a senior, Ryan Gardner, last week, and I understand his position. I understand the position of a lot of people in the community, so I just want to explain this. When we have a snow day, when we potentially have inclement weather, it does not mean one-hundred percent of the time we're going to go remote learning. We could potentially have a traditional snow day, but if we go back to the slides we talked about earlier, context matters. That last snow day was four school days before a ten-day break. It butted up against the vacation where teachers were trying to wrap up units and lessons and put a bow on things before kids were going for a week and a half. It was also when our community spread rate was the highest or third highest in the state and the highest we'd been at all times. So at that time, it didn't seem like the best idea to say, yeah, let's have a snow day and have kids go gather together and end up having hot chocolate in everyone's house. Didn't seem right at that time, given the timing of it. Doesn't mean we're not going to be in a situation three weeks from now on a Thursday where we're going to get wet, heavy snow, and we're going to anticipate power lines are going to be down, and half of Tingsboro won't be able to log in a remote day. So context is going to matter in every decision we make. So it's not we are one-hundred percent remote learning all the time, and it's not we're one-hundred percent snow day all the time. I think we have to, to be smart about it, understand where we are, and think about how we can best serve kids. The last snowstorm, we also had two days warning that this was coming, and we all knew it was coming, so our, our teachers were able to take materials home and plan accordingly. If something sneaks up on us on a Monday, we may not be so lucky, or if we have ice in the morning. So there, there are just a lot of factors. So I'm committing now, it's not one-hundred percent either way, we're going to look at the entire situation. But I do appreciate Bryant Gardner, and I think, I just want to make a point. You know, a lot of people can do a petition on social media, and, and they can, you know, click here to support this. That's all well and good, but for him to reach out to me, to set up an appointment, to have an articulate conversation where he went point by point advocating for why we should have traditional snow days, I have one-hundred percent respect for that. That, that's the right way to do something, and it doesn't necessarily always have to live on social media. So I, I appreciate his advocacy on behalf of all students. It wasn't just his, it was all students, so. So I commit that it's not guaranteed either way. The next other topic is for Mr. Messina to talk about, Budget Subcommittee.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So it's my understanding, as after I mentioned, the potential of forming a Budget Subcommittee that, I have three attractive volunteers from the school community who are willing to jump in with both feet and sort of go with me on this thing.
Rather than jumping right out as a traditional Subcommittee of the school committee, in speaking with Dr. Flanagan, it seemed more like, for right now, it should be more of an ad hoc-type committee, where we get together and discuss maybe how it takes shape, maybe a few meetings into that. We can see if this is truly something we want to have become a pure Subcommittee of the school committee, then we could work with Policy Subcommittee to sort of develop some sort of charter.
I think the need to be, just jump in and say, you know, what do we want to look at? What are some of the items I think we want to look at? The members may have some items that we want to look at, and over the first meetings, come up with that.
Try, you know, we can work with Policy Subcommittee and go forward.
So looking forward to trying to put this out. Mike and I have some discussions to make to try to work on some talking points to get us started. You read the notes.
Any questions about that Budget Subcommittee? And then the last slide I have, Mr. Chair, is just our upcoming meeting. As you know, we will begin our budget timeline discussion at the next meeting, kind of rule things out, let you know what the work we've done, the front-load things, and where we see it going. We will have the councils, you heard they're here tonight, we'll have a council in the elementary school here presenting on social emotional learning throughout the district. Additionally, Mr. Piper will be coming back to that meeting. Mr. Piper is working with Corey Mello still from Northeast Technology to develop a comprehensive technology plan. He will update the committee on, on the efficacy of our current Comcast system, where we are in progress in terms of getting the new Comcast system across the bridge at the elementary school, and any other steps we're taking. Certainly can answer any questions on both technology. And then we have a February IP for a pool and budget discussion. That's all I have.
You can have Flanagan.
Date of AP, Council Ninety-three contract, ratification.
We came to an agreement with Council Ninety-three. We established a three-year agreement. We're going to establish a joint labor management committee, and all the financial details are in the drive for review, if you look to review those. I'll seek a motion to accept the signed MOA from Council Ninety-three and to authorize the chair to sign the contract.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion?
Frank, can you just elaborate just for the community what Council Ninety-three is?
Oh, sure. So Council Ninety-three is custodians and maintenance staff of the community, of the school system. And we began negotiations earlier in two thousand twenty, and then they broke off because of COVID, and we resumed them within the last month. We picked up where we left off, and we came to an agreement.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's?
Carrie Seven Zero Zero.
Thank you. New business. Homeschool applications received. Committee and Amy Shiner, one child in kindergarten. Laura Mailander and Barry Hellenberg, one child, grade one. Finance, Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Twelve bill warrants were presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all that in approved. In your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Also in your drive are the two payrolls since we recognized at the last meeting, the payroll of December twenty-first, as well as payroll of January fourth. And in your drive are the three reports that make up the December financial packet. That is your budget as of the end of December, the revolving account balances at the end of December, as well as the student accounts. I do also have under other, in your drive is, Whitson's provided me a current loss statement as of the end of December. Certainly, we did anticipate that this would not be a normal year in terms of operations, both with the reduced attendance at the schools. Currently, your program is looking at about a fifty-two thousand dollar program loss through the end of December. This was not unanticipated. We are looking with Whitson's in some ways to enhance the program. We're going to stop looking at offering breakfast to remote schools to include in the packets, to sort of help drive up some of the revenue that we get from the state, but...
It certainly was anticipated, so I am monitoring that with Whitson's and Scott Barry on a monthly basis, so I just wanted to update the committee where we are as of the end of December. And that's it.
You good, Joe? I know last year, there was the program, I forgot the name of it, where there was free lunch available for all students. Is, is that now concluded? What's the, so that's still available?
So, so the, they call it the seamless summer option because it was something that they just went forward through to the end of June. So actually, this continues to be a situation where if anybody, and it's anybody within the community too, doesn't necessarily have to, have to be a Tingsboro student, can get free lunch, and now we're looking to expand free breakfast for all of them. So that, that will continue throughout the school.
Excellent.
If I can just add one other point on the finance. ESER two, Mr. Messina, can you help me out here? I know that one of the things that came up with the ESER grant, and there's been discussion about it, the ESER grant is the elementary and secondary ed, oh, God, something emergency relief fund, secondary school emergency relief fund. That was stimulus money received last year. ESER two, there's, there's conversation that will be rolling out now, and the conversation right now that we're hearing preliminary is that that could be about three and a half times, three-point-seven percent, or three-point-seven factorial of what your last grant was. Our last grant was fifty-seven thousand, so we're looking at about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand potentially. Mr. Messina has a webinar, I believe, next week coming up on that with all business managers to find out when that money will be available, but there is more money potentially coming to the district. We don't know what the parameters are behind that, we're not necessarily sure what the spending window and that will be.
This is a question for Mr. Messina. In the first round, do we have to share any of those funds with any of the in-town schools?
So that was like trying to hit a target with the dart, with, in terms of DESI, because they were changing it on the fly in terms of what the level, what the level had to be of participants at each of the schools. Initially, we were told we did have to share upwards of ninety-nine hundred dollars of that fifty-seven thousand. Through the middle of the spending, all of a sudden, Sarah Lewenzic worked with DESI to recalibrate and find out that we didn't have to give them any of that. So we pulled back whatever they had spent.
Yep.
And ESER two, it would be my understanding that we won't have to share ESER two with...
That was my understanding as well, because they have their own line items for funding in that one. That would be good for from the beginning.
Yes.
So potentially more money on the horizon, which is good.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe.
Do we have any, I'm, I'm sorry, just to continue, do we have any, our, can I ask this question? If we've identified any additional projects to use those funds for, or should we wait for a later meeting on that?
We have plenty of projects.
No, I understand that. It's just obviously with the first one, it was, it was immediate need, but looking at potential upgrades in facilities, you know, I, I know a lot of our, not necessarily here, but a lot of buildings are facing, you know, around the state are facing issues because... because they can't handle the additional workload they're being forced to do as far as air handling and, you know, being able to refresh the air in our classrooms. I didn't know if you had anything like that or maybe just.
So we're having those conversations. There's a lot of things, and honestly, part of that, we don't know enough about the pool testing yet because a good chunk could go there. We just got to, we need to figure that out. So it's really too early to say, but we have a lot of, I've spent the money four times over already, so. Sorry, Mr. Messina.
Actually, I'd say past superintendent's probably spent eight times over.
All right. Progress.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. School committee discussion. Mr. Mall?
You know, I've, I've worried about our numbers coming back after the break compared to what we saw after Thanksgiving. I am, I'm hopeful that this trend continues. You know, after the meeting with the Board of Health last night and seeing what our trends are as a community and as a school system, I'm very hopeful that people learned that they can't go out and do what they've been doing around Thanksgiving and getting together in large numbers. I, I know I've been very outspoken about that in wanting to protect the kids, protect the staff. And one thing I will say, I, I, through all of that, I was hoping I was wrong because I certainly don't want to see anyone get hurt. And I hope the numbers continue the way they are and that we're able to continue to educate our kids as safely as possible and have as many kids in the schools as we can. But thank you very much to the administration and the staff for working through this. And, and yeah, I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Yes, we're up.
Yeah, I just pulled up the site, Tingsboro Public Schools, the COVID site that we have linked on there. And just, as of 6:53 this morning, it was updated. You know, I think it's good that there's only four cases, right? I don't, 44 would be bad. Four is better than, than that. And then the, the trend on the town site looks to be, although it's only updated 1/7/21, that'd be updated later this week?
Every Thursday.
Comes on Thursdays.
And we think that number hopefully will be down. We haven't had a lot of, I know we did meet with the Board of Health last night, and they were pleasantly surprised, which was positive feedback from that. So I think that, you know, our, our approach has been pretty steady over the past few weeks. So I'm, I'm delighted of that. So please keep up the work, community. Thank you.
I just want to speak quickly about some professional development that's gone on. You know, as we continue to talk about leading and opening schools during a pandemic, it's not just about keeping the ship right in the middle, but we are moving forward and instructional practices are continuing. And teachers are working hard to provide kids with the best opportunities possible. IXL is our new program that we purchased for progress monitoring, instruction tools for online. We have into social studies that you allowed us to adopt last year, our K-25 social studies program. And we've been supporting our math teachers K-25 through Dr. Hillary Krezenberg and the Leslie program along with Erica Cooper, our first-year math coach. All of those programs have had web-based, online professional development, probably four, five, six sessions now, including full coaching sessions at the elementary school. So along with making all of their adjustments to teaching and learning and figuring out how to teach students at home and at the library and at the grandma's house and in person here at the same time, we have not stopped moving forward and trying to improve all of our instructional practices and our materials. So I just think sometimes that gets glossed over. We do the adoptions and we move on. But you need to know that when you purchase those adoptions, there's substantial dollars attached to them for professional support. And our teachers have been heavily embedded in job embedded PD since we started the year. And that's, that's credit to them to just keep moving forward during these times.
Thanks, Mark. Joe?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All set. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I just want to, partly personal, but say congratulations to all the seniors that have gotten accepted into different colleges. I know it's been incredibly hard year to keep moving forward. So just congratulations to the Tingsboro schools. I'm very impressed. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more schools coming up soon. So congratulations and foraging forward.
I want to thank the Board of Health and the school committee for our meeting last night. I found it to be very helpful. And, you know, I thank my fellow school committee members for, you know, supporting that meeting. I think it was invaluable for us, and I think it was the right thing to do for our community. I'm really happy to see the numbers in the community. So thanks to the community for keeping the numbers down and hopefully that we can see them continue to stay down. I want to point out something that Mike just said, actually, about the dashboard, that it was updated at 6:53 a.m. I believe Dr. Flanagan updates that. And so, you know, Dr. Flanagan is working very long hours to keep things going forward. You know, and a big thank you to Dr. Flanagan. We push back on him. He gets the answers for us, and he continues to do the right thing for our schools. So a big thank you to Dr. Flanagan. The last piece I have is that many families may have received a communication about the Tingsboro Middle School visioning sessions that are coming up. That project is still moving forward. The timelines don't change because of COVID. So this is the community's chance to participate in, in this process. So I encourage the community to participate where they can and as they're available. Thanks.
Just like to thank the special ed team tonight for their, their work. And I do want to point out that, you know, true to the, true to the vaccination rollout, they talked about moving school nurses up in the batting order. And I'm proud that a lot of our school nurses are able to go get the vaccine this week. So they're very excited to do that. So the more stability we can provide in those offices, the better off we're going to be as a, as a district moving forward, keeping our kids safe. So, so thank you for, for all that work.
I just want to comment, though. I think that as people are vaccinated, I don't think it means they can let their guard down.
Absolutely not.
So I think we are, as a, you know, an elected board, we should still reiterate that it's important. If somebody is vaccinated, it doesn't mean that they can just go willy-nilly about. They still have to adhere to all the social guidelines and the mask and everything else.
No doubt. I just, I just appreciate the fact that they were, they were recognized as being frontline workers and having this opportunity.
I don't think they would behave that way. I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, definitely.
Well, good for them.
I want to thank the Board of Health for meeting with us last night. I think it was useful to meet with them. I think it validated a lot of what we're doing and a lot of decisions we're making. They supported that data, so that was good. I want to thank Sarah and her team for presenting tonight. It's always good to hear from the individual groups in the, in the school systems. So we're connected with them. We do not have a need for executive session tonight, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Take it. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry 700. Have a good night, everybody.